Call it to order?
They adjourned.
You can't adjourn a meeting before it's been called to order.
Did you call it to order?
No.
Okay, so they just said the meeting's not been called to order.
You need to leave.
Um, no.
Call it to order and adjourn it.
So it's open meeting law in Arizona?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand.
Yeah, we don't need to call it to order. We're just making.
So, open meeting law. So show me an open meeting law where you can do that.
The meeting's over.
The meeting never starts. Yeah, so we can pull that up, and I mean, you're a sheriff, so I mean, you kinda gotta enforce the law.
Why can't we just do it?
Oh, so who's this guy over here? Are you a board member, sir? Okay, so you know about open meeting law in Arizona, right? Okay, so you have to call the meeting to order and follow the agenda.
I'm gonna refer you to the board president.
Who's the board president? Okay, so you know open meeting law in Arizona? Okay, are you following it right now?
Yes.
How?
You don't have to start a meeting.
So if you've posted a meeting public, you don't have to ever call that meeting to order?
Nope.
Oh, that's interesting. Wow. I'm glad we got this documented, though.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's great. So aren't you the LD-10 Republican Chair? Supposed conservative. What do you have to say about this?
Sir, this is a nonpartisan location.
Mm-hmm.
Chris King, we've hired you for this position.
So you were elected to represent the people.
You're elected to represent the parents.
You're not representing the people right now.
I'm elected to represent the students and the staff of this.
That's actually fully untrue.
Not true.
Untrue.
It is elected for.
Wow. That's the Republican Party for you right there, though.
Everybody, this is a meeting of the governing board. Do we adjourn the meeting?
You didn't adjourn a meeting you never started?
We adjourned the study session.
Okay, so what time's the?
My opinion is, you're being asked to leave.
Okay, so what time is the open meeting?
So please leave now.
What time's the open meeting start?
Please leave.
No, no, I'm asking you a question. You're an elected. You work for the people. What time's the meeting start?
I'm elected.
Okay, so why is he talking?
Because he's the superintendent of the school.
So he doesn't run this meeting. So you run the meeting, and you're elected, and you work for the people. When does the meeting start?
We're not adjourned. We're not having a meeting today.
Was it posted publicly that there would be a meeting today?
I want to make sure you guys know that this is a live speech to the parents.
This is amazing that you're doing this publicly. It's amazing to see. I mean, this is something to witness. So I'm Patriot Party President Steve Daniels. Everyone that wants to get that. President of Purple for Parents.
But we do have LD-10 students here.
That's Chris King, LD-10 GOP Chair, right there? They're walking out on the people.
Way to go there.
Wow. This is what you get down here. Garrett Lewis is gonna love this in the morning. I'll be on Garrett Lewis describing what I'm witnessing right now. John Aitken, okay. A-A-I-T-K-E-N. Oh, this is gonna be great on Garrett tomorrow.
I'll push forward.
Remember this on Election Day, people.
Parents, parents of the Vail School District, you need to file a complaint against the school board for violating open meeting law. This is absurd. Wow.
Last board meeting had one parent.
Chris King, nothing to say over there. Way to represent the people, Chris. That's the GOP for you right there. He's literally a legislative district chairperson. He's the chairman of LD-10 for the Republican Party. That's a supposed conservative right there who just walked out on the people. I just want everyone to know that. LD-10 Chair. Are you LD-10? Who's LD-10 in here, anyone?
Who is?
It's unbelievable. This is what you get these days. This is your government, walking out on the people. For what? What was their reasoning? Does anyone know what their reasoning was?
Robert's Rules of Order.
They just don't wanna hear it. They just don't wanna hear from the people who elected them. Very interesting. Who are you guys with? I'll be on Garrett Lewis. I'll probably be on Garrett Lewis tomorrow morning talking about this. It's unbelievable. What's that?
I guess we're done?
Well, I don't know. I mean.
Are they gonna come back?
The meeting starts at 7:00, so I'm waiting till.
They said they adjourned it, so we're assuming they're done.
Well, the meeting doesn't start till 7:00. It's posted publicly, so I say we wait here until at least 7:00 because they have to call a meeting to order to adjourn.
I'm not gonna argue about that. I mean, that's, you know.
You do enforce the laws when you stay in Arizona.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, you guys are actually the ones that should be.
And also too.
You guys are the constitutional law enforcement, so I appreciate you guys.
And also too, though, you know, we enforce the spirit of the law, not the letter of the law, so we're looking at things.
Can you say that one more time?
In a way that we want to make everybody happy here, okay?
You're trying to make people happy? These people are elected to do a job. Your boss is elected to do a job too, so right now you're actually condoning unlawful acts.
I'm not condoning anything. That's where you're incorrect. I'm saying there's a peaceful way to end this, and let's just end it peacefully.
We're being very peaceable, but I feel like we need to wait until.
That was incredibly disrespectful.
Yeah, the meeting doesn't start till 7:00, so I feel like we're gonna at least wait until that point.
That's up to start.
That's in 12 minutes.
The meeting's been adjourned.
You can't adjourn a meeting that.
There's no meeting.
Sir? You cannot adjourn a meeting that was never called to order.
We're not on either one of your sides, but if you're not holding.
You're on the side of the law, would you agree? Upholding the law? Especially as sheriffs. Like, you guys are held to a higher standard. Yeah, you guys are held to a higher standard as sheriffs because you're elected.
There's no meeting.
Well, you can say that, but it's not your job to determine that.
It's been canceled.
Well, it hasn't. You can't cancel. That's a violation of open meeting law in Arizona. So if they go past 7:00 and they don't call the meeting to order, then they're now violating the law. I would expect that you guys arrest them.
No, we don't enforce.
You don't enforce the law?
We enforce the law.
Okay, so if they're violating Arizona statute, ARS, you're not gonna enforce that.
What law are you referring to?
Open meeting law in Arizona.
Do you know the ARS on that?
She's looking it up. Yeah, but there's actual statute that says this is how you have to conduct open meetings in Arizona. And it's school boards, it's city councils, it's county boards. They all have to follow, and if they've posted a meeting. Well, we could look at that. I mean, I'm not a drudg.
32-4801, 38-431, 38431.01, 38-431.02.
What's it say? Yeah.
Do you want me to read off?
Absolutely.
Let's do it.
I'm curious.
No, I know. Go for it.
Educate me.
Well, I mean, spirit-wise, it says that they posted a public notice that they're having a meeting. They need to have a meeting.
Okay, so what is the penalty if they don't do that?
I don't think there is a penalty to it. That's why many of these people follow the law.
Okay, so then.
That's probably interesting.
So it's not an arrestable situation, so law enforcement is not gonna get involved in that if there's no.
Well, you're involved telling us to leave.
There's no violation. Well, that's a different issue.
Why?
If this is, if there's no meeting and it's a trespassing issue, then that's what we're looking at.
I'm here for a meeting that starts.
Yeah, the meeting starts at 7:00.
And are we stopping you from sitting here?
No, but you did tell us to leave, though.
Well, they asked us to tell you to leave.
That it's gonna be right here at 7:00.
And then we do an response for that.
Well, I don't know. Who do you obey?
We got a sergeant here, so we're gonna listen to a sergeant.
Did the sergeant? Yeah, I don't know. I'm just very confused with what, they're not doing their jobs, and you're backing them up to not do their job.
Absolutely not. We're not backing up anybody.
Okay, so we'll wait till at least 7:00. I mean, we'll see what happens if they wanna.
If we were backing up anybody, then we wouldn't be talking.
I gotta speak. Why do you want to hear it?
Well, I don't even know why. Yeah, I don't know why we're having the discussion.
I don't either.
You came up to me, though. I didn't come up to you.
Well, yeah, because we're done.
But we're not done, so you keep saying we're done.
Well, they're done.
How do you know they're done? How do you know? I mean, you're making a decision for them now at this point.
The sergeant, who is in communication with those people, is saying the meeting was adjourned.
But it wasn't. It was never called to order, sir.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna argue minutia.
Well, semantics do matter in this case.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, from what I'm being told, what we're being told, is that it's not gonna happen.
Okay.
And that's from the board members who are talking.
Okay, well, we'll see. I mean, we'll wait and see. I mean, it's 10 to 7:00.
Did it have any penalty case?
Yeah, give it to the news, man. Go for it.
And actually, if you think we can hold them accountable personally, where the school district doesn't even have to pay their fines, they have to pay them personally. Which is what we will pursue, but there's nothing for you to do right now. But I also don't expect to be told that I can't sit here for a publicly noticed meeting that starts at 7:00.
Are you sitting?
I am.
Did I tell you to sit?
You did ask us to leave. I have it on tape.
But that's fine. I'm not gonna deny that, but you didn't leave, and we're not doing any enforcement.
Well, then why did you ask us to leave to begin with?
Because we were asked by the facility people here.
I understand very much. I appreciate it.
I appreciate the fact you're not enforcing it, so thank you.
So that's why I'm curious on the penalty.
What do you think, Justine?
I think this is cowardice.
I mean, it can be done through the attorney general.
This is pretty bad. I expected they at least would hear.
I called you guys in, and I will take responsibility for that, because you know what? These parents have been lost. They've been fighting an uphill battle, and Vail School District is going against parents' rights. And there is a Parents' Bill of Rights that gives parents the right to say, "I have the authority to not have my child masked at school." And if these people are gonna overstep that authority, they are breaking the law.
Yes.
They're breaking the law.
I agree.
And they need to be told they're breaking the law so that they can stop with this madness.
Well, I agree. We tell them they're breaking the law, but the problem is the people that should be holding them accountable are standing right here telling us to leave.
The meeting has officially been canceled. So not adjourned because it was never started. It has been canceled.
Okay.
At this point, everybody needs to leave.
Well, it's posted till 7:00. It was posted at 7:00, so. Well, I'm not gonna leave till it's the posted time. They have the ability to come out here at 7:00 and tell us it's been canceled. They can come out here at 7:00 after it's, sir? Sir, it's what it's not?
I'm gonna give you a reasonable amount of time to do so.
Okay.
Can you give us 7 minutes?
I will give you 7 minutes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I'm saying. Till 7:00. This is your law enforcement. See, they side with the government. It's two tiers of justice. Two tiers of justice. Is that the sergeant, I assume? They're violating.
They're violating. There is a law.
And then, and the frustrating thing is they're using.
It's for the people that we hired in the votes.
That's correct. So you elected. They were elected, but the. The frustrating thing is too is that then now they're using the sheriff's department. The school board is now using the sheriff's department to try to trespass us effectively, because they've already used the word trespass. So they didn't trespass us yet, but they've already started down that path by using the verbiage. That's correct. And the sergeant was basically trying to tell us to leave at this moment. And we don't have to. Bottom line is, if the posted meeting starts at 7:00, the school board, a representative of the school board, if they wanna continue to violate the law, can come out at 7:00 and say, "The meeting's been canceled," which is a violation of open meeting law.
Correct. It's violation of.
Bottom line. Unbelievable. Par for the course these days.
Introduce yourself. I've never seen you, but.
Yeah, Kelly, it's Steve Daniels, Patriot Party of Arizona. Yeah, I met you down at Firetruck Row.
You wanna tell the Viva listeners?
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a violation. So Michelle, who is the president of Purple for Parents, is actually educating sheriff's deputy here on how open meeting law works in Arizona. Because they don't understand it, but they're actually enforcing what the school board, who's already violating law, they're actually helping back them up in violation of the law. It's really unfortunate what we deal with. And they're just doing their jobs, quote unquote. Well, professional, they may or may not, but that's their job too, because guess what? Their law enforcement. Oh, definitely. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Their law enforcement? But if they're not enforcing the law, that's the problem I have.
Well, I think this officer is really listening.
Yeah, I'd say he wants to understand, and so I do appreciate that he wants to understand. I agree. Yeah, and he's actually trying to understand, which I do appreciate. A lot of times, they just won't even listen, so, like I said, sheriff's departments, honestly, for me, I think we should put more of our resources. I think we should defund the police and put all of our resources behind sheriff's departments. But you love hearing that, though, right? Because, I mean, a lot of people don't understand that police departments are actually very unconstitutional. They're hired. Well, they can move them over to the sheriff's department. Move them over.
What would stop the community from privately funding their own police force?
Privately funded police force would be interesting. There's nothing necessarily that stops that legally. There's nothing that can stop that, but constitutionally, the sheriff is the highest law of the land. A sheriff has the ability to arrest the governor. All right, so most people don't realize that. The sheriffs are the highest law of the land, but they don't. They should, but when we're dealing with somebody like in Miracopa County, Paul Penzone, who is a Soros-backed sheriff, you know, he was funded by George Soros, you're not gonna get that sort of action. But I've been a proponent for a long time of defunding the police departments because they're unconstitutional. Police chiefs are hired by a city council or a mayor, so they're political. It's a political position. Whereas sheriff's departments are constitutional because you elect your sheriff. So you have the ability as the people to hold them accountable. Like, I can't go remove a police chief. I have no ability as a citizen. However, we have the ability to recall a sheriff. We have the ability to elect a sheriff. So they're constitutional, and I think we should move all the resources behind sheriffs.
And I'm just a business guy.
I was just a business guy before all this, so I get it, man.
These children have had a lot of emotional issues, and there are four children in this Vail School District that have committed suicide as a result of the feeling of dread that this pandemic and this COVID situation, the mask mandates are not gonna end. And there were children here tonight that wanted to speak to their board members to let them know that this was not right, that they're violating their parents' rights. Their parents are saying, "We don't wanna send you to school with masks on." So the district and the school, everybody should be honoring what the parents want. It should be a choice. If you wanna send your child with a mask, send them with a mask. But if you don't, honor that.
They're gonna have a meeting after.
Let me just say, if I were the size of the virus.
Is that a school board member?
Getting through the tiniest, smallest little corner of a cop mask.
So it's very likely they may come back in here and try to have a session, a private session, and that's a further. That's illegal. I mean, she just showed you the. Yeah, I know. So that's the thing is, is you guys here, if they do that.
We're talking about what might happen.
Yeah, well, if it does, what would your reaction be? I mean, would you document it? Would you actually file a?
Exactly what my reaction would be.
Yeah.
We've got a sergeant on site here. I defer to him.
Report to him? Well, we should talk to the sergeant then and see if he would actually take action, if he would actually file a report on them violating the law, because it's a violation of law, we've seen.
Just like we're deferring to him. He said, "You have 7 minutes."
But yeah, you're a deputy. You can file a report if you witness criminal activity, unlawful activity. I would ask that you do that.
I'm sure we're all gonna be doing reports.
If you witness them, come back in here. Understood. You guys are. Steve Daniels. Steve Daniels. I'm sure you'll be doing a lot of paperwork, unfortunately, but if they come back in here to have any sort of meeting, because if more than two of them gather, if more of two of them gather, they are violating open meeting law.
They are gathering in that room right now. That's a quorum.
That is a quorum. I know, but she knows the law, and she's good at it. I know, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that very much. What I would ask is that if you do witness them, come back into this room, more than two of them, that you file a report on that. I would. I appreciate that. I would very much appreciate that. I'll let y'all handle that.
I do think it's interesting that they stopped you and I, though. I even heard her say, "I hope you're selling a lot of coffee," Kelly, which was incredibly insulting. There's no reason for that.
You know, and in point of fact, if they wanted to sell a coffee, we wouldn't take the risk of taking a side, but, you know, when people are coming to us and saying, "I was raped as a child and had a handle all over my mouth, and I'm back in therapy now because everybody is trying to force a mask on my face." And when people are saying.
So let me, I just wanna make a request. So you're the sergeant?
I am.
Okay, so the request.
You already made one now for 7 minutes, so I'll walk with you.
I'm gonna make a further request. If they come back. Well, I need to document it here. If they re-enter this room, more than two of them, it's a quorum. They are violating open meeting law in Arizona. I would ask that you file. If they come back in this room after this point, I would ask that you file a report that they have done so. Will you do that? Will you commit to me that you'll do that?
I will talk to you outside, and you can record it. I don't care.
I'm just wondering why we can't talk right here.
Because you asked for 7 minutes, and I guess.
I didn't ask for 7 minutes personally. I personally did not.
Can you give us till 7:00?
I didn't. Till 7:00. Have they come back out here to cancel the meeting? Is this a school board member?
The meeting has been canceled.
Well.
Walk out.
Look, man, you're making it more difficult.
No, I'm not. We're walking out.
Okay, so now you're putting hands on me.
I'm escorting you out.
You're putting, okay, being escorted out.
Thank you.
Okay, so they're putting hands on me at this point. So everybody filmed this. I just wanna make sure everybody sees it.
Thank you.
So he said he was gonna come talk to me, so I'm waiting for him.
It's done. They canceled it?
Yeah.
So your sergeant said he would come speak. I'm waiting for him. So they canceled the meeting.
It's not about the masks.
No, it's not about, and don't wear a mask to submit to them so they hear you. Don't ever put a mask on so someone will listen to you. That's about submission and control. Please don't do that.
I'm cheating us.
No, they canceled it before anyone was even in there. They're having their own private meeting. So I'm waiting to talk to the sergeant still, after he put his hands on me.
The people coming together.
Waiting to chat. Just waiting to chat. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, you got him, man. Let's talk to the sergeant.
Who's that?
Let's talk to the sergeant. Well, he said he's coming out, but he needs, if they go back in that room, if those school board members go back in that room, he needs to file a report. Bottom line, it's his duty to uphold the law, but he's not. He's not upholding the law.
Exactly. Can I bring everybody in?
They.
I don't know, but can I still bring everybody in?
Sure, if you want to. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Everyone goes in. Let's go. Come on. It's called civil disobedience. Go ahead, people. No, I'm serious. Go ahead. Gotta get them. You gotta get everybody. Yep, go get them. You gotta go grab them. Civil disobedience. Is everybody going in? All right, everybody go in. Just go let them know what you feel. Who wants to go in? Go in, go! Go in. Go in! It's your meeting. It's your meeting. Go in.
Is there somebody there with a meeting?
You can go tell them to have the meeting. It's the people's job. Tell them to have the meeting. Go in.
I got two of them left.
Go in and tell them. Go in and tell them to have the meeting. Go in and tell them to have the meeting. It's your meeting. Go tell them. Go tell them to have the meeting. Go instruct these people to have the meeting. Go inside. It's called civil disobedience, people. It's time to make these people listen. Everybody needs to go and tell them to have the meeting. Go tell them to have the meeting. Go instruct these people. Go tell them. Go tell them. Everybody go in and tell them. They have to listen to you. Tell them to have the meeting. They canceled it. They try, yeah, go tell them to have the meeting. I would go in there and tell them to have the meeting. Yeah, go walk in. Sorry, guys.
Bye.
I would go in there and tell them to have the meeting, because they're trying to cancel it. They left? It's beautiful. Beautiful. So if everyone's inside that building, what are they gonna do? Trespassing. It's called the right of the people to assemble, and the fact that this is an open meeting that was posted, they never called the meeting to order. You cannot cancel a meeting if you've never called it to order. So they're the ones that are violating open meeting law in Arizona. Unbelievable.
If they meet all together and in one location like that, then they.
It's a quorum, yes. They were all in there.
All but one, because Allison's not here.
Yeah.
But they were planning on this, and that's why it's bull crap, because they knew that this was just gonna happen.
Exactly.
And these sheriff's deputies are upholding their side. See, the sheriff's deputies are actually violating law by not enforcing the law on them.
Exactly. The highest law in the life.
It's very unfortunate how they're handling this. I mean, the sergeant was putting his hands on me, so that's where we got to.
Yeah, that's not a good thing.
Oh, no, that's what they wanna do, though, you know? They wanna violate people's rights. She's telling, "Go in."
May 4th, board meeting downtown. We should be there, holding our own meeting.
When is it?
May 4th.
Yeah, at some point, you start having your own meetings.
Board supervisors down at 2:30 West Congress, 9:00 AM, May 4th.
At some point, you start holding your own meetings.
Me and the people hold our own board meeting.
That's what it is.
We'll pass our own resolution.
That's what it is. I mean, at some point, you just start taking power from these people.
That's right.
If they're not gonna do their jobs, you do it for them.
We stand up, and it's over.
That's right. This is absurd.
So, yeah, they've got a barricade.
Oh, yeah, no, the sheriff's right in.
If we verify that they are gone, they want us to leave. Is that okay?
No, no! That's right! They work for the people. They need to call them back, and they need to have the meeting. They need to have the meeting. Yeah, the people should have a meeting. The people need to have a meeting at this point. This is terrible. Oh, they'll just keep putting you off.
Can I read it to everyone?
You should. You should read it if you have it. Go read it to these cameras.
I gotta get that one guy to give her a speech.
The people have a right to assemble here. A meeting was posted, an open meeting was posted. They're still in there? They're still in there?
They have also not told us when they're rescheduling the next meeting for. They themselves don't know yet. It will be posted on the website.
They can't do that. They can't just cancel it. It's open meeting law. They violated it. Why was the meeting canceled? Why was the meeting canceled? They've given no reason.
Can Cruz come out and tell us?
So we need to have the board president come out here and explain why the meeting was canceled. Let's have the board president come out. Let's have the board, yeah, this is a public facility. It's taxpayer-funded. Let's have the board president come out. He needs to face the people. Yeah, pull your, yeah. Take your kids out of this school. Oh, the board, the board's going out the back. Board's going out the back. Board's going out the back, board's going out the back. The board's going out the back, let's go confront them. Yeah, they're still here, they're still here. Yeah, some of y'all stay here. Yeah, right? Is he the president? Oh no, he's not, John, superintendent. Let's go find, hey, the board's going out the back, let's go find them, they're still here. Yeah, definitely go find them, you have to confront these people. To tell them this is unacceptable. Oh, I don't know, but if there's some still here, you saw our drive, okay. Of course they did, yeah, why do they need escorts? Maybe because they're violating the law and people are upset? It's wrong! Are they out the back already? Well, I don't know, but. Two of them already left? And they had a police escort? Did you? Well, this is probably the back of the, they probably came out here, but. Yeah, so let's chat about the whole thing, so, the fact that, you know, the sheriffs are, you know, sheriffs are the highest law of the land. And you guys are elected, the sheriff's elected, so, well, they're awesome until they violate, until they're not upholding the law. And when you have a board who has posted a meeting, it's an open meeting, and. Yeah, Michelle, if you want to come cite the statutes.
I am trying, let me tell you this, because I have heard this, okay?
Okay.
The, the fact of the matter is, they're holding a meeting.
Okay.
You've got people charging through the door.
I wouldn't call it charging, but okay.
Talk Carl what you want.
Well, it wasn't charging when, when you're entering. Words are, words are important, sir, words are important.
I agree with you 100%, I agree with you, okay, I do, man.
Okay.
I don't want you to think that I'm like one sided on this, because I'm not. The fact of the matter is, is, they can conduct this meeting in a manner that's gonna be.
According to the law, in accordance with the law. Okay?
I get it, I do.
Okay?
And no one's getting arrested.
Well, I know, because if we were, then there's a whole other issue you guys would have, I mean, that's major civil penalties. So, for you guys. Well, I know, but to sit there and say those words, I mean, that kind of tells, it's like a veiled threat, I feel, you know, nobody's getting arrested, I don't think we even need to talk about that.
That's not a veiled threat.
Why don't you think we need to discuss it, is what I'm saying?
Because you keep repeating yourself and saying the same thing over and over and over.
Well, I say it at the end, I say it multiple times, because you're not maybe understanding what I'm saying, because if you were, you'd actually be holding the board accountable, because your law, yeah, you're getting, you're helping them, why, why, but why are you helping them? Why are they being escorted?
The meeting was cancelled.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
They closed the building.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know at that point, okay, they closed the meeting.
Let me ask you a question.
What's that?
What happens when the parents bring their children to school tomorrow? And they don't want to have masks on their faces? What are you guys gonna do, because what I'm being told. Police escorted out of the school, third grader. By the school! Now, you, I don't know who, who the police was that came in here, but there are children that are being sequestered, and then the parents are having DCS called on them, and being weaponized against parents.
I get it, I don't have the answers for, for all these questions.
That's what we were here to do! That's what we were here to do, was to get the answers to this, tonight, and they ran from us.
So this is the problem, is, is that when you have law enforcement that, that works against the people, because at this point they're working against the people, no matter what they want to say or think, they're protecting the public servants who are violating open meeting law in Arizona, bottom line, however you want to look at it, they're protecting them. Because they're escorting them to their cars, they're kicking people out of the building, and it's just, it's unlawful what we're seeing take place, and they just say, well, we're just doing our job, we're just doing what we're told, but the problem is, is when you just do what you're told, as we've seen throughout history, and I say this often, when people just do what they're told, we have problems. They're in the room still, so they're still in the room! So they're still here, the, the board members are still here.
This is what I tried to come talk to you about, they said you wanted to catch me.
Yeah, I want to have.
With a line or something else, you're trying to set a trap, it ain't gonna happen.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'm trying to find a reasonable solution for the situation.
So I think the reasonable solution is, is they hold the meeting as it was posted, and we're trying to have words with them, that's all, so it's unfortunate, I know, so, so if they're still here, we'll just go have a meeting.
I, I don't know. That's not happening either.
Okay, that's the problem.
They've already cancelled.
I know.
I get it.
If they have a private meeting, that's a, oh, they are gonna have it.
They're not gonna have it, they're not gonna have it without. I gave my word, I gave my word that, hey, I'll get everyone out. Yeah, all the staff, and like I said, the reality, so, I don't think you have a right.
Well, see, that's, that's what's crazy.
Can you understand where they may be?
But are they, are they that afraid that they think that parents are gonna physically assault them? See, that's the problem though, is that. Yeah, no one's threatening them, we want to talk to these people, man, and I get it.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to be sympathetic, I'm just explaining to you why they haven't left, and, and they want to leave, they want, they want to leave.
Then they can walk out to their car. I mean, there's no, there's no one here that's threatening any individual in there.
I understand that, and as I explain to her, I'm gonna say, just say what you hear.
Yeah.
Reality, as opposed to how somebody feels, their feelings are still valid, regardless of the reality of the situation.
Well, I disagree, I disagree with that.
I agree. How, how can I help you?
Let us in.
I have no control over that.
You're worried about getting them escorted to their cars because of their feelings?
I'm worried about getting them out of here so we can disperse and we can, everybody can go home.
That's it, right there. So I've been telling people for a long time, this is two tiered, they, they, the government protects the government.
I know.
The government protects the government. But they, but.
They're not protecting us.
They don't. These people, these guys should literally be telling those guys, they should be walking in telling those board members, get in the room, do your job, and the people are gonna come in and they're gonna have words with you. They should, they should be, they should be making sure the meeting happens.
Even in the military, we have a thing where, you, you don't have to follow unlawful orders.
That's correct. That's correct. Thank you. Say that again, say that again.
Well, in the military, we have this thing where you can, you don't have to follow unlawful orders.
In fact, your oath, in fact, the oath you take says you will not, you will follow the constitution and you will not obey unlawful orders. It's a good point to bring up, too. It's a good, it's a good point. So you know, he, he brought up a good point, you know, in the military, and this is for anyone who takes the oath, you are not supposed to obey unlawful orders. That's a part of your oath. So you're right now obeying unlawful orders by allowing them to violate open meeting law in Arizona, bottom line. Well, we've already shown you, hey, Michelle, she showed you how. No, no, she, they violated open meeting law.
Oh yeah, but there's no law enforcement necessity in that, because it's all civil.
It's all civil, because it's all civil, okay. Because it's all civil, they don't have to enforce the law. Yeah, then you guys don't even need to be here. Like, why, yeah, why are you here then?
We were requested to be here.
By who? By the staff, for what reason, for what reason though? Keep the peace when they violate the law! Keep the peace when they violate the law! Unbelievable, unbelievable. So, so they're here, they're here to keep the peace, no, 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 yes, they are here to keep the peace when, when the elected violate the law. Unbelievable. So listen to this. I'm gonna go, I gotta go tell these people, this is unbelievable. See, he just admitted, he just admitted what's going on here. He said they are here to keep the peace, so that the board, the elected, can violate the law. Unbelievable. It's unbelievable. So the school board, the board's still in there?
Yes they are.
Yeah, board's still in there. They are in there, I don't know if all of them, I think one of them may have left, but they're still a quorum. What, we were told by a sheriff's deputy, because I, I wanted to understand why they're here, why the deputies are here, and he said, "We're here to keep the peace." And I said, and I, and I, that's the point, what, what, nobody's made any threats, not, no one, we want to talk. So what's frustrating is, is that I asked, I asked them, if you're here to keep the peace, are you here to allow them, to facilitate them violating open meeting law? He said, "Well, it's a civil violation, so we, there's nothing we can do criminally." I said, "So you're here to keep the peace though, you should be in there enforcing the law, which is to ensure that this meeting is held," but instead, they want to escort everybody off the property. They want to silence the people and consider trespassing. It's just, it's unbelievable.
I haven't told you yet, I love you.
I've just had enough of this mess, man. I mean, I've been fighting this with the school boards for numerous years, and this is just on a whole other level. Yeah, go, go ahead, guys.
We just want to talk with them about our concerns for our kids, that's it.
I get it. You know what, I'm from Chicago. And, and I see what happens there, starting to happen here. That's why I left. And nobody's listening, that's why. Nobody cares about what we're saying. And, and it's, it's ridiculous, it's a, it's a, it's fixed, we have to unfix it, we have to unfix it.
But who's listening, because it's not the board though? I appreciate that you're listening, sir, I appreciate that you're listening. I appreciate that, thank you. I appreciate help, Sergeant, I appreciate help. Yeah, the board's cowards, for sure. There you go, you're gonna run for the board? Alright, this guy's gonna run for a board, that's good, we need it. Alright. It's time to fix it. Right? I appreciate that. Everybody needs to start running for office, because this is a mess, fix it. Good. He's running for what? Awesome. Awesome, good job. 4,400? I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get on Garrett Lewis tomorrow. Let me get your info, because I'm gonna go on, I'm gonna talk to Garrett after this, Garrett Lewis, and I'll get you guys, if you guys are gonna file a recall. Here, just, just text me. Unbelievable. They're still in there.
So we have a concession! Let me stand at the doorway so I can yell out at the same time.
Okay, everybody be quiet!
Okay, so we have a concession! They will give us 15 minutes and five people to speak. My thought is, because I'm the one that's now been designated to choose, students come to the front, another one's speaking.
What, why, why are we? Why, why are we allowing, why are we allowing them to dictate? Why are we allowing them to dictate?
We need Jody! We need him, we need him.
Five people?
Five people is not.
They need to have the meeting, like, if they can, if they can do, if they can do 15 minutes, they can do two hours, what's the difference?
We're here all night.
Yeah. If they can have 15 minutes, why can't they do two hours? I don't understand this. What's that? It's supposed to be a two hour meeting, so if they can do 15 minutes, why can't they do two hours? They're just, they're just gonna piss more people off, yeah. No, he, I don't know where he is. He might be up there, he was running around, he was up there running around. Hey, sir! Hey, sir! I don't know his name, green jacket guy. Why is he, I mean, nuts things. Who is he? Excuse me! Talk to him.
I was just wondering if we could have some taxpayers get in there, because it's our fight, it's not theirs, we need to make this right for them. I get it, but we try to be speaking.
We need more than 15 minutes, guys.
I've been to every meeting, guys, I'm Geraldine, I've been to every meeting, the kids need to speak.
Be able to supervise, however a child is the one going to be speaking, I think it's more important for them to hear the children.
Children don't make decisions, man, no. Like, this is, this is, I know, the kids and parents.
Parents, right, you need to let them inside, the parents are the ones. I'm sorry, you gotta have parents.
They are pissing more people off by doing it this way, trust me.
Hey, everybody be quiet, please! We've come to an agreement, we're working on it, okay?
All of us need to be heard.
I would just like a counter to ask the board, kids coming in are fine.
If a child is the one speaking, their parent can come in with them, one parent.
No, 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 you don't, you don't stop parents, you do not stop parents. If they have two parents here? If there are two parents, if there are two parents, no, no. If there are two parents with that child, two parents go in. If there are two parents, two parents go in, I don't care. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. You do not take a parent away from their kids.
Anyway, I have to, I'm going with him, I'm his mom.
Yeah, because what they're doing, they want to separate, they want to separate everyone and isolate a couple kids, so they can intimidate, that's the bottom one. But, but they're trying to isolate.
And you want to kick a kid out of line, then you're gonna have to convince everybody else here.
I think everybody wants to speak, I think everyone here.
This gentleman who spoke for the group and convinced the rest of the group, you're outside. So don't come in after the agreement's been made.
No, 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 that's not how things work, there's not agreements to be made, that's not how things work, though, sir.
Or no one gets to speak, and the board leaves.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, let the board leave. This is not how things work, sir, I'm sorry, it's not how things work, man. It's not how things, yeah, it's either, it's all or nothing, so, but for him to sit here and say, "We're, this is not, let's make a deal!" This is not, let's make a deal, people! Let them violate the law, let them continue to violate the law. Because guess what, I think they know the opinion right now. I think, oh no, I know, but I'm saying, I think they know the opinion of the people by this point, so this, this is just optics. This is optics, step one is that they face the people. Sir, and, and I've been doing this for years. They won't face the people, and I get your point, I've been doing this a long time, man, these people are cowards, these people are cowards. Yeah, they're trying to run, these people are trying to run from the people that they represent. Well, recall, yeah. That's right.
That's right.
Yes, please, please come. Don't, listen, hey, sir, I don't know who you are, but all I would ask is you do not negotiate with terrorists, okay? Oh, these people aren't terrorists, they're keeping masks on children's faces.
But we have to.
So that's, they're, they're acting like terrorists.
But we have to...
Okay, who thinks?
We really want to be heard, and I know that they don't care.
Oh, no, they don't care. They're doing this, they're doing this. No, no, you know what they're doing to you? What they're doing is they're using this to say, "Well, we listened." They will, no, 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 what they will do, they just played you. They just played you. They just played you. They played you. They played you, bro.
At the time they have a meeting next, we actually have a board, a group that can actually vote. Because they're short one.
They played him so bad.
I had a question for you, man.
Why is he making decisions? Why is he making decisions for a group? No, you know what they're doing? Is they're using this, what they'll do, listen, what they do after? No, I think they've heard. My point is, is what they're gonna do is they're gonna use this to say, "Oh, we listened, we heard them, and we still made our decision." I know how, I know how these people operate, man. It's cowardice. Straight cowardice. Oh, they can hear you. We were, I was in there, they heard me. I was, I've been doing this a while. I know how these people operate. Do it. Do, please do it. Please take your kids out of these schools. These are, these are literal indoctrination centers. These kids are being indoctrinated. Are you afraid of COVID, man? You look pretty afraid, bro. Good. Then why isn't he out here? Chris should be out here. Tell Chris to come out here, then. Go, go have Chris come out here. If he's on our side, go have him come out.
But I can't go in.
I thought you were in there. Well, so... But I understand you want that. But what they're doing is they're using you. They're u...
So what would, what would you guys suggest?
Either all or nothing. Either everybody goes in or nobody goes in, because you're negotiating with terrorists at this point. They're holding you hostage. They're holding you hostage right now.
If nobody goes in, what do you accomplish?
They violated open meeting law. You file a complaint with the AG, you start recalls. Well, what's the alternative? We, you let five people go say a few words, then it gives them the opportunity to say, "We listened to the public. We heard what they had to say." They listened to five people. And they will do that. Trust me, they will.
Unless they don't hear anything. They're gonna be like, "The crowd was rowdy. We didn't let anybody..."
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Perfect. We have it all on video. We were in that room. Well, we were in that room. They canceled that. Oh, yeah. They can't, I have it on video, them standing up there, and them saying, "Oh, we canceled the meeting." Oh, yeah. They are cowardly, man. They were in that room. They were in, they're full of shit. Yeah. They were in that room, and they said, "Oh, we're canceling the meeting." I said, "You can't," they said, "We're adjourned." I said, "You can't adjourn a meeting that you've never called to order." It's open meeting law in Arizona. It's literal statute. Yeah. They, they violated the law. And now what they're doing, now what you're, what they're doing now is they're gonna say... Yes. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna say, "Well, no, we didn't violate the law. We held the meeting." Yeah, they're, they're right now using you, and it's sad. They violated the law. But now, now they, now they can technically say, "Well, we held a meeting. And we heard, and we heard from the public." Sorry, guys.
That's okay.
I get it.
But if we never got in, then what, though? What would happen?
Then, then what you do?
They, they wanted to just let kids in, and I was like...
Oh, no, you don't, no. You don't separate the kids.
Because then they can manipulate the kids, and scare the kids, intimidate them, to say, "Oh, oh, never mind," and they walk out.
Hundred percent.
So at least they did that.
Well, I understand your point, but it's, it's the, so in negotiations, what they're doing is, is they're manipulating you, because they're using the kids, they're using the kids to manipulate. Because they're saying, "Well, well..." There you go. There you go. That's exactly what it, but, but don't let them. That's what I'm saying. And it's hard, it's hard to stand up and say, "Okay, all or nothing." Look at where our country's at. I mean, we, we're really at a point where it's all or nothing. You know? And it's like, we're using our words still. We want the peaceable solutions, but if they don't give you the opportunity to, if, when the representatives start to cut off the people, and they won't listen to the people, that's when things are irreparable. And we're close to that. Clearly, because a lot of people showed up and wanted to be heard tonight. But they didn't want to hear them. It's just, it's unbelievable, man.
They tried to adjourn the meeting before it even started.
That's correct.
So then they started it, so that they...
That's what I have a feeling they're doing, because they know they're in trouble. I mean, look at all the people here. I mean, there's, there's a couple hun, at least a couple hundred people here. There's at least a couple hundred people here. Probably close to three hundred.
There are parents who just want us to storm it and go in.
About there.
Can they, can this, can they, can they...
I would almost...
They all quit? That's a rumor, but I don't know if it's true.
Everybody, everybody should be in that room. Everybody should be in that room. If they're meeting right now, they're violating law by not allowing you to be in there.
There's a rumor that just came through that the school board just quit, that they all quit.
They quit? Perfect! If they quit, okay. So there's a rumor that they may have all just quit, the school board. If that's the case, who wants to take their position? We got some people... All right. Gotta, you gotta negotiate tougher, sir. I'll help you with this. If they quit, we got replacements.
We've already got the paperwork to recall John.
Perfect.
The application is in the box, so heading to the lounge center.
Viva at four on Thursday? To get the recall paperwork. I gave her my card. Contact me, because I'm gonna, we need to get Garrett Lewis involved.
He's already got the, I've already text, messaged him.
Okay. He texted him? I talked to him earlier today, and he told me, yeah, he's like, "Give me the updates." I tagged him in this video, so...
Yeah, I emailed him.
Okay, perfect. He wants to know what happened. So he's like, "If anything crazy happens tonight, let me know. I'll have you on," so... Yeah, yeah. Text me. Text me. Are they still in that room? Is the bar? Are they, are they being escorted out the back? Who's that? Who's that being escorted?
I don't know. You're tall.
Somebody's being escorted out the back. I don't know if it's a school board member or not, but... I'd go talk to him.
Do not let them regulate us. We need to be heard. We need to...
They're violating open meeting law right now.
You guys, can I hear a kitchen, please? Guys, I want everyone to look up tonight. Who is on this school board? I want you to tag them. In a post. Tag them on every single one of their social media posts. And while I got your attention, why is Mordi De Santos extending the mask emergency regulation? You want to know why? You cannot push these vaccines without an emergency authorization.
That's true.
That is correct.
You should not build a force at PCR testing, because it doesn't work anyway, no matter how you calibrate it. You can't force a mask. You can't force a vaccine. And I'm having so many people contact me and telling me just the opposite. And if you're wondering what you can use against it, and it's not working, twenty-one US code, emergency authorization, three-six-zero-BBB-three. You can't force medical devices.
That's right.
Correct.
It's also against the Nuremberg code.
Nuremberg code.
One hundred percent true.
So as they're forcing our police officers to push this, that's who is going to be responsible.
Yes.
Our police, our teachers, our medical staff, our...
Pass it around.
Our children that are going through school, they're having them do the vaccines.
That's right!
They don't want to, but they won't graduate.
Hold that up!
Hold, hold that up.
Is going to speak on Nazi Germany. She lived through it. She'll be at the...
Yes, thank you.
She wrote a book. They're for sale.
I've listened to all of those people talk that survived, and they're phenomenal. They also sell a book. Please buy one of their books. And this is how it started. It started by saying, "I don't want to lose my job," and I just interviewed a police officer. I'm not gonna give his name, but he just said that. "I can't lose my job." Well, what you can do is look into Roe versus Wade, and no, we have been here before. We have been here before, and I won't go there again, and I will stand up.
Everybody has to stand your ground. When they just took those five children back there right now...
They should not have allowed that. Should not have allowed them to separate us. Do not, no, even if they weren't the parent, do not allow them to separate you. What? Yeah, that's not right. That's right. They should not have allowed, we should not allow the people to be separated.
You guys know why they're doing this? Because they know our children do not know legislation, because they're not teaching it. Four years ago, the world history AP test got slashed. I know, because I have a daughter that's a freshman in college. She took the AP world history test for the last time to which they actually tested everything. It's being slashed. They're not teaching our children what they need to know. And all the time, the teachers don't always know it. I mean, I, I'm, I have a teaching certificate, and I didn't know shit about shit with history until about five years ago, and then definitely during the Brownup. Right? Well, I'll have to look it up, because I swear, if we just keep sitting back and watching Netflix...
While Trent was in office, we didn't do our job.
That's right.
We let him do it, and he couldn't do it.
Hey, everyone, I've got somebody on the phone right now. They're saying that based on Robert's Rules of Order, since there is a quorum here, we need to call the meeting to order and vote in new school board members at this moment. So who wants to do that? Anyone want to call the meeting to order?
Yeah, right here.
Somebody that's in district. Somebody's in district.
Call the meeting to order. Quiet! Everybody be quiet! Quiet, quiet, quiet. Please, be quiet. Call the meeting to order.
The Vail School District Board meeting is now called to order.
Second?
Thank you, second.
I second.
All right. So, agenda. New board members. How many do we need?
Four.
Is there four or five? Well, I hear they've all resigned. I hear they've all resigned.
I tell you what, I will freaking do whatever position you want me to do. I have to do it. I'll do it.
Anyone want to nominate someone for school board?
I nominate Bill Leibig.
Okay. We have one right here. Everybody recognize?
Bill Leibig!
What's your name?
What's your name?
Bill Leibig.
Bill Leibig has been nominated. Who seconds it?
I second it!
Do we pass?
Anyone?
Yes.
Anyone, anyone opposed?
Say aye!
Aye!
Oppose!
Somebody get Kelly in.
Okay.
All right.
We have now, I nominate Kelly. Or no?
Somebody in district nominate her.
Somebody has to, you have to be in district.
You have to be in district. I can't. Are you a district?
Okay. We have, we have Tiffany Sanders.
Okay. What's your name?
Stacy Olinger.
Stacy Olinger? Do we have a second? Second in district? All right.
Okay. Nominate Tiffany Sanders!
All those in favor?
Aye!
Opposed? All right, we got like two names.
We got two.
What was your name? All right, perfect. We got two. So this is Robert's Rules of Order.
Quiet! Quiet!
Right there. Angelica Hemmey.
Okay, who nominates her?
I second.
Are you in Vail?
Yes.
All right. What was your name?
Angelica Hemmey.
All right.
I second.
Angelica, we got a second. All right, all those in favor of Angelica? Opposed? All right, congrats. That's three. Who else?
Anybody else in Vail?
Who else in Vail? Go outside. Find someone. Somebody nominate her if she wants to be a member. Three. One, two, Anastasia. Okay, you nominate Anastasia. What's your name?
Anastasia Tatakis.
All right. All in favor of Anastasia?
Aye!
Opposed? All right.
Congratulations!
What was your full name? Full name?
Anastasia Tatakis.
Okay. One more? That's four. Five. If they've all quit, we're hearing they've all quit, so we're going based on that.
All right, it's time to send the new board in.
That's four. Oh, you were nomin, we didn't vote on you. We didn't vote on her.
Hey, we already had somebody here, guys.
Okay, someone need, so she has to be nominated.
I nominate Tiffany Sanders.
Seconded? Okay. All in favor of Tiffany?
Aye!
Opposed? All right, full name?
Tiffany Sanders.
All right, so that's five. They've all been elected based on a Robert's Rules of Order. At this point, we need to adjourn. Okay, at this point, so, somebody needs a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna go out there and tell them what's going on.
No, wait, hey, just go over to the mask policy part.
Oh, okay, okay, so...
We have to have a, we have to have an official meeting for...
So they'll have to meet on that. The board, the board, the board will have...
They have to see each other.
Let's get pictures of the new board.
New Vail. Need one more. Where's the fifth? Need the fifth. Someone find Angelica.
Your first day on the job.
Yeah, so new, new board? Okay, so here's the new board. Okay. All right, you guys, hey!
Look here.
Hey, you can vote to remove the masks, so somebody on the board needs the motion to remove the mask, and then someone needs a second. Okay, hold on. Hold on, guys, quiet.
Everybody be quiet! Quiet!
Go ahead.
I motion that the entire Vail School District will be free of mask policy, and it will be optional to all teachers and students alike with no fear of retribution.
Perfect. All right, board, board member needs a second. Okay, we need to have a vote. Okay, say your name.
Angelica, aye. Aye, Tiffany Sanders.
Aye, Stacy Olinger.
Aye, Bill Leibig.
Aye, Anastasia.
Okay, that's unanimous. No more mask, no more mask in Vail. Is there any other, is there any other agenda items you guys need to handle down here?
I motion that Vail School District has no rights to do any medical interventions on any child.
Yes.
Even with an emergency order.
Okay. If you're, okay, repeat that.
I motion that the Vail School District has no rights to do any medical interventions on a child, even with...
Not to force.
Uh, even with an emergency order.
So no, you want to repeat it one more time with, I think they, I think people here are giving feedback, giving feedback that they don't want it to force.
I motion that the Vail School District is not allowed to force or even recommend medical treatments for children without parent, parental consent, and it does not matter for an emergency order.
Okay. So there it is. Anyone second that?
I second that.
Okay, so let's have a vote.
Angelica, aye. Angelica?
Aye, Tiffany.
Aye, Anastasia.
Aye, Stacy.
I believe it.
Okay, motion's passed unanimously. Anything else that needs to be handled?
I'd like to say one thing, and I want everybody within earshot to hear me. Quiet, quiet.
Hold on, guys, listen.
Get the bullhorn!
Just blast it outside. Just blast it outside.
I want everyone within earshot of my voice to understand what is going on. We now were elected as the new Vail Board for this district, and we have voted to end the entire mask policy for the entire school district, and made it optional for teachers and for students.
Awesome.
Have an option and a choice.
Okay, quiet, guys.
Immediately. Second order of business that was passed.
Do you want to give the second one?
We also, I'll hold your questions for just a second, please. I'll hear everybody, but just give us a second so we can tell you all what just happened, and what we were voting on. Please hold for a moment.
Robert's Rules of Order, history made in Vail.
Roberts' Rules of Order, history made in Vail. We also voted that Vail School District has no rights to do any medical interventions or force any medical interventions on any child without their parental consent. When there's an emergency order.
Is there any, you want to, you want to open up public comment? Okay.
I am just, yeah.
Justine.
It's time to vote for the new board.
Justine, Justine, let the board handle it, let the board handle it.
We're going to let the board vote from here on out.
Go ahead, go ahead, Justine.
Roberts' Rules of Order, we have cited Roberts' Rules of Order, in order to make this happen, and in light of, until we can get it confirmed, we know that the rumor is floating around, and I'm going to emphasize rumor because we don't have, you know, actual proof unless somebody heard it from a board member themselves, that they have quit, but we will not make the assumptions. We want to make these meetings peaceful, and we will be certain to allow every parent who has a grievance, good, bad, or indifferent, to be heard. This is what we were here tonight to do, all we wanted was to be heard, and in turn, we were called nasty names, we were called an angry mob, and in light of the fact that we did our best to try to negotiate something, we were shut out. Anyway, despite them having an active meeting at this point in time with a limited number of people, which I know was negotiated, there's not much we can go past with that, all we can do is go forward as a group, as a family, we all need to speak together.
To remove them from the building so we can have our...
Together, we can make a lot of things happen, there does not need to be violence, negativity. We are here to hear the parents, we are parents ourselves.
They just cancel them.
We all have kids in the school district, I know a lot of them do, we've had a very rough year and a half, all of us have gone through things that we never should have dealt with, in light of the tyrannical governmental offices that have tried to keep us under their thumb for this long, and we are no longer going to tolerate it. We have told Governor Ducey numerous times, over and over again, I know a lot of you have, despite falling on deaf ears, we've called, we've emailed, we've desperately tried to reach to our government officials who keep locking us out. Well, we need to start this on the grassroots level if we are ever going to make any changes. And it needs to be done in an organized and peaceful fashion. We are not here to be the angry mob that they claim us to want to be, we were not here for that at all. None of us were here for that. We were not here to fight or to hurt anybody. We want to mend the broken children and hear our voices as discerned parents.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, we get another, hold on.
So, I want to thank everybody.
Don't adjourn yet, I'm getting another...
And we will be getting some clarification on a couple of things really quick, if you guys can say, please do, if you can't, we totally understand. But, and, you know, as things develop, and if we can, if we can...
Yeah, okay, what you got?
...conclusion of everything that we've heard, we will be certain to act quickly as a new board, if that is in fact the case that we are, and we will inform everybody of those changes and decisions, okay? So, please be patient with us, and we will allow everyone their time in due time.
Okay.
So, let's, let's allow this in the case of the new board.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get, just adjourn.
Okay, so for now, this new board...
Get a, get a motion, get a motion at first.
I have a motion to order.
Motion to adjourn in a second.
I make a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 the board members have the motion.
Go ahead, go ahead. Make the motion.
We will now motion to adjourn, I need another board member to second.
Second?
Right here.
Seconded.
Okay.
She seconded it.
Okay, we have a second to motion to adjourn the impending new board.
They need a board to adjourn?
All, and the board, all in favor, say aye.
So, board member, you aye?
Aye, Anastasia.
Aye.
Aye, name?
Angelica.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Angelica.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous to adjourn, meeting is adjourned, go ahead, call it.
We have motion unanimously to adjourn, we will make sure that all of you are notified in the...
Here, talk to Michelle, talk to Michelle real quick.
...confirm our information, going forward, we will only reveal the facts. So, as soon as we can get ourselves organized, we ask you guys to be patient, and we will help the other districts succeed the same way we have. We are all together in this as a family united.
Good job.
United and peacefully, as we find our information out, we will be sure to let everybody know, and we promise that.
Good job, parents.
And Catalina Brownup.
We'll, we'll work with whoever wants to work with us, let's get that one.
Good job, parents.
All the members that you support us and help us out, as we get this process, given that there is going to be one, please be patient with us because we're trying to confirm our information, okay?
Roberts' Rules of Order.
Yes.
Well, at this point...
She said John Curry doesn't know, he's the superintendent, but the other...
Thank you.
Our principals from the schools, they're...
So, the, the board, the board's gone, from, from what we're hearing, the board is gone, so we probably could just get everybody out, let the, let the people, the staff that are in there, go ahead and leave, yeah.
Okay, can I, can I...
High school at six o'clock.
Change of party meeting, I guess I was told, um, to remind everybody of tomorrow night, uh, please be there, only you can help make some changes that's necessary, but please do it peacefully and orderly. I don't want people calling everybody an angry mob because that's not what we're here for.
That's right.
Right?
We're going to try. It's under Roberts' Rules of Order.
If you guys want to hang out, you can.
We just elected a new board.
It's under Roberts' Rules of Order, it's a law.
Quorum was held by them, and they kept the people out, the people held the meeting, and they elected the new board.
Who elected them?
The people. The members of the...
Did the kids speak?
Yeah, the kids went in.
Good job, you guys. See, this is, as people, this is how the people take back power, this is how the people take back power.
That's right, and this is how you take out the seat board that's not going to go...
That's right, if they want to, if they want to come and not hold a meeting, then the people hold the meeting.
Good job, guys.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
I need to get that to the video, I want to share with you. Can I make a change?
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry. I've done a little work myself, I see it. I got to touch it, that's clean. Make it mine. Hey, stay on them.
Good job, guys, good job.
I don't know if you heard, but there's only two board members in there, well, it's one, that's John Curry, and Akins are the only ones in there. And they said that, but I know you guys did your thing out here, but, they said they had to send everybody home, or something like that, because...
They didn't have a quorum?
They didn't have a quorum.
They had a quorum, and this, because they wouldn't allow the people in, in an open meeting, under Roberts' Rules of Order, the people held the meeting and elected a new board, so...
Who do you kick out?
It's under Roberts' Rules of Order, so it can go to...
Who got kicked out, who's on the board, who's off?
All five, they're all gone, because they decided not to allow the people into the meeting, the people held the meeting, and it was motioned, putting, you know, it was a motion for people to, to be on the board, it was seconded, it was voted on, so, at this point, they're going to have to go deal with it in court.
Bill's now on his board.
I heard. Yeah. I heard.
So, it's how, it's the official, it's the official rules of, of, that open meetings are held, how meetings are held, so if you Google Roberts' Rules of Order, then read up on it, yeah, it's like a whole process of how open meetings are to be held. Well, they had a quorum, they were in there, I have it on video, so I have everything on video that shows that they were in that room, they declined to have the meeting that was publicly announced, so it was publicly announced there'd be a meeting, they declined to have it, so the people then called the meeting to order and held an election, so, that's on them. And now it's up to the courts to decide how they want to handle it, really, it's up to the court of public opinion how it should be handled, Steve Daniels. I'm sorry? Well, nice to meet you as well, thanks for being here. It's probably time to get everybody out, though, so they, yeah, let's go, the meeting's been adjourned, the meeting's been adjourned. So, under...
We haven't spoken yet in there.
What?
How do we know the board's in?
So, under Roberts' Rules of Order, a quorum was held because they had more, three, three more members were in that room, they were, and I have it on video, they were in that room, I have it on video, they declined to hold the meeting, so the people at that point called the meeting to order and elected a new board, and then adjourned.
But I have a problem, when we don't have enough people from this community having input into the student selection.
There, there was, there, the only people that, so the people that motioned for them to be put off...
Thank you.
Were in, within district, so, we made sure that anyone that was making a motion was in district.
And how long does this last for, because we need to be able to have a community of like, people.
This, this, so this, this would be, as I understand it, through the next election period, what would happen is, is this board will now hold meetings and listen to the people.
We know nothing about these people that just got...
Understood, so, it's probably better than what you dealt with in there.
We don't know that.
We know Angelica.
I at least know most of them, I can tell they're very, very, like my parents.
They're here to fight, they're here to fight, so, I understand your point, but at a certain point, the people just make decisions when the representatives no longer want to listen to the people. You take back power, you take back power.
I like these people.
And I understand, I'm not from here, I'm not telling you how to conduct business, I'm just, I know what's going on, and these people are unlawful, unlawful.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not doing something that's going to get us into more crap.
No, I understand, well, at this point...
Can you name off the people that just got...
So, she, okay.
Can we talk to them?
And she, so she got elected, he got elected, she got elected.
Anastasia.
And Anastasia, so go talk to them, go talk to them, like, go talk to them all.
Can we talk to them?
I wouldn't trust Channel Four.
I wouldn't trust, I wouldn't talk to media.
I wouldn't talk to the media.
You can see the people behind you.
Yeah, I wouldn't talk to the media.
I'll talk to you guys.
I wouldn't talk to the media.
And she's...
What's that?
I'm trying to stop her.
So, make sure you, you talk to whoever you need to, um, your guys, school district, your board, good job.
Really, it was all just...
I'm going to answer to you after 10:30.
I'm having my card. Just text me or email me.
Thank you for coming.
No, thank you.
For meeting, thank you for sitting in there.
Yeah. Got to do it, you know?
Do we need to save our kids to put them back?
No, you guys all need to exchange information, though, so, go look up, so, understand, because you're an elected board, there are open meeting laws that you have to follow, no more than two, go look this up, please, and study it, but, no more than two of you can communicate outside of that room, because now you're, you, you don't want to violate open meeting law, so make sure, where's Michelle? Where did Michelle? I want her to explain it, because you got to, we don't want to be guilty of exactly what they're doing, right? Let me grab her real quick.
As a parent, hearing this stuff, it's...
Now I have to like, indicate.
Do you know where Michelle went? Okay, Michelle, Michelle?
Will, will you explain, well, we've already elected a new board, will you explain to them open meeting law and the fact that no more than two of them, no more than two of them? No, no, so, explain to, explain to the board members, where's Angelica?
Be, be, be prepared, after everybody is done talking, the sheriff is going to get, is wanting to get everybody out of here.
Yeah.
I trust, what they're doing right now is a thousand percent wrong, and they're supposed to represent, Friday meeting, which you're not allowed to do. Absolutely. They may or may not be voting right now, we don't know, and those who are supposed to represent us, who are supposed to represent those people in this room, will not even allow us to go see what they're doing in there, to hear what they're doing in there. Yeah, so if you're on the phone, and you people are talking together, so you not, you are able to, uh, discuss any of the stuff that, in regards to what the district business is.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle, so make sure you guys go look up, make sure everybody...
Who was the mob in this room, like, what are our next steps?
Well, we've not done this before.
Was Marco watching it online?
Yeah.
He was like, I asked him something.
So what I would recommend is go look, like, say, go look up Roberts' Rules of Order, make sure you're not doing anything that violates that, I keep saying that because that's very important, but then you're going to obviously need to call another meeting, schedule a meeting, just like they do, follow the same process that they do, because it's the right process, so long as they follow.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Excuse me.
I'm like, where are we going?
Kelly Walker, yeah, I'm picking towns like Kelly Walker is here too.
So, you can have casual conversations, you just can't discuss any kind of board policy, any district, no district business, but you can talk about, you know, obviously getting a meeting set up, that type of thing, so, make sure, make sure y'all exchange info, make sure y'all exchange information.
Oh, no, no, you don't want to go, you don't want to go, you're the new board, not the best.
Yeah, I wouldn't talk to, I wouldn't talk to the media, wouldn't talk to the media, bad idea.
Can you talk off camera and tell us what happened?
Nah, I wouldn't talk to the, don't talk to the media, they just spin it.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
I can tell.
I can tell you guys have done this before.
Unfortunately.
How old are your kids?
Has anybody talked to any of the parents that, that were in there, that came out? Talked to any of the parents at the...
Well, Carrie said they like, cut it off right at five minutes, they weren't very like, once the kids were speaking, and they're like, we'll send these five minutes to them.
But there was two, only two board members in there, left in there, is that what I'm hearing?
Who was it, Akins?
Okay. Okay. So that's technically not a quorum, so they shouldn't even be holding the meeting, as it, with two people, they can't, so that, again, they had a quorum, they canceled, people left, the people called the meeting to order and conducted business, that's, that's how As it, with two people, they can't, so, again, they had a quorum, they canceled, people left, the people called the meeting to order and conducted business, that's, that's how it works.
So, like, two board members in there?
Yeah.
So, essentially, why you're talking about simply two, none of what they're doing matters.
That's correct, it's not a, it's not a correct meeting.
So, they're really, they're really, they're hoping that nobody out here knows the law, nobody out here.
Well, they don't know the law, well, yeah, they're hoping that, hundred percent, because they're clearly not following it, so, but, they're instructed when.
That matters.
Bad idea. They'll tell your board member not to be on camera. I wouldn't talk to the media. Yeah, good, good, good.
No, I know, I know how to deal with it.
Michelle, you under, do you know what ro, uh, open meeting law is? Do you know how open meeting law works? So, if more than two of you, Michelle, wanna explain it to her real quick as far as open me? No more than two of you can meet and discuss any district policy, because then. Yes, and text messages, so, if you do that, then you're violating open meeting law as well, so, I just wanna make sure all the new board members understood that you'll set a meeting, you'll set a meeting, just like they do, you'll just follow their process. And you can hold it wherever you need to, understand, it doesn't have to be here, like, this is where they hold it, doesn't mean you can't hold it in open, public, and invite the public in to conduct business. I'd start running your own, your own board and start instruct, you know, you can start instructing the superintendent.
I told the two weirdo media guys, I said, no, this is a rumor, we do, we are not gonna speak to anything until we absolutely have had a group of that, I said, we are not gonna comment on anything until we have absolute proof, until that point in time, we will not have any comments.
Some people, I would, I would talk to her, because she's a little concerned, I mean, just to hear from her, obviously, as a new board, she's a little concerned because she didn't really know the, who was being voted on, who's who.
Well, there's, there's people that are like, oh, I think her rules are gonna be followed, her, her procedure, we have to sign up.
At best, this is an interim.
At best, this is an interim solution and. At a certain point, if the elected no longer follow the law, then the people take, take that back.
I agree.
Yeah, I think everybody can, I mean, I don't think there's really a reason to hang around at this point. Yeah, so it's not even, uh, the president and, it says Akin or something, and I'm not sure who the other one was.
Female or male?
I think it's a female, but I'm not sure.
Somebody named Karuth?
So, Karuth and Akin are the only ones in there.
And Pop, it's Karuth and Akin are the only ones in there. Everybody else failed.
Yeah, there's only two, so it's technically not, it's, it's not a.
Chris failed.
It's not a legitimate meeting at this point anyway, if they only have two in there.
I'm not surprised.
They don't, they don't even have a quorum in there, the people held the quorum, so. Alright, we're, we're at a point where you start, gotta start just taking the power away from these people.
They won't get out of the room.
Well, they won't, but that's fine.
And then they decided they didn't want to have the meeting when they saw that over a hundred parents showed up and that's been, uh. Sorry, sorry.
Everybody needs to leave, they will announce the next meeting, tonight might be different criteria, I don't know, but we are done tonight, please go home.
Alright, yeah, they're no longer the board, you guys will be announcing the next meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you guys are good.
Read down the rules of order, so I don't get myself like slammed in the media.
No, you guys are good, hey, you're the, the people, and that's the bottom line, the people are taking the power back, so. Good job. Good job, you gotta be tough. Good job, guys. Alright, y'all, that's about, that's about it for tonight. This is how you have to take the power back, people, parents need to start doing this everywhere. Every school board, this, if they're not following, if they're not following the will of the, of the voters, of the parents, they need to be removed and replaced, so. Good job to Vail School District tonight, have a good evening, everyone.